Counsel people. No, that's a new thing where it allows you to leave the meeting when they start recording. I almost clicked that.
I ain't gonna be recorded.
Else mute at this point, that'd be great.
All right. Good evening all. This is our town of Windermere. Virtual workshop for May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. Time is six oh one P M. And we will begin our agenda with, as always, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilperson Martini for the flag in the, is that on the dock there? Very nice. All right. If everyone would take a moment and join me for a brief invocation. Father, as always, we pray for your guidance as we make decisions and talk about things that are important for our community and our town. We ask that keep all of us safe. Especially those that work every day to protect us and law enforcement and first responders. And all of those around the world that keep us safe day and night. Amen. All right. So I know we have. I saw for open forum, I believe we have. George Plucker and Polker and. There's one other. Yes, but I don't see Ms. Rose here.
We have Joyce Rose, George Polker, Doug Kegler had a written comment. And then Bob McKinley had a written comment. I'm not sure if he was coming on tonight to present. But Dorothy or I can read those into the record.
All right. Why don't we go ahead and let's start by reading those into the record if no one has any objections.
I see any objections.
None. Let's do it.
All right, Dorothy, I'll go ahead and take on Mr. Kegler's. Says hello, Dorothy. Understand there is a workshop this evening regarding the boathouses at Pine Street and Third Avenue. I'll be flying at the time of the meeting and will not be able to attend. I would like to state that I'm in favor of the staff recommendations of renewing a ninety nine year lease. My property at three sixteen Palm Street is directly affected by the decisions towards the boathouses. As my property goes down to Pine Street and Third Avenue. We like and appreciate the historical significance of the boathouses and only ask that they remain kept up and presentable. If the boathouses were to be removed and or kayak rentals to occur in that area, it would significantly increase the trespassing problems. I have on my property and dock in that area already. Best regards, Doug Kegler, three sixteen Palm Street.
You, Robert.
And then Dorothy, do you have Councilman McKinley's pulled up?
I do.
Okay, good.
Yeah, do you do as well?
You, you can, you can, you can go ahead if you don't mind.
Okay, um, it says Town Clerk Dorothy Burkhalter. This is a copy of my comments for the council workshop this evening. I am in opposition to rewarding current leases with ninety nine year lease. Following are the comments that I emailed to Mayor O'Brien and individual council members. After reading the executive summary for the disposition of the boathouse leases. I am dismayed to see that the H B B and town staff are making recommendation to reward current leaseholders with the ninety nine year. Lease and effectively vacating any town claim to ownership of the structures. This definitely is not in the best interest of other town residents who would love to have had the lease rights to these boathouses. Council is elected to represent all of the town residents, not just a few who were fortunate enough. Or knew the right people years ago to attain the temporary lease. Making the right decision is often difficult, and I am sure that you will put a lot of thought and research into the decision you are also letting me to make. Thank you for your service to our town. Sincerely, Bob McKinley.
Thank you very much. I also see that Mr. Gentry would like to be added as well. I see that in comment, right? Good. Okay. George, do you want to go ahead, sir? If you'll give us, of course, your name and.
My name is George Pelker. I live at four oh five West Third Avenue. I'm gonna wear two hats tonight, so I actually have hats to differentiate, just to lighten things up a bit. So this is my serious, this is the only serious hat I own.
We'll be the judge of that.
Yeah, well, wait until you see the next one now. So, um, this hat represents the Historic Preservation Board. As most of you know, I think I'm the chairman of the Historic Preservation Board. We worked with. Council Williams and Roberts to basically come up with those recommendations that you had before you in your executive summary. I really, really like the. Goals that are enunciated up above in the paragraph, I would add one from a historic board perspective. And that is, we would like to make sure that the boathouses are kept in good repair and preserved. Because of their history and the ambiance they bring to the town. That's what I have to say about the goals as the historic board. And then put on my other hat, which is as an owner of one of the boathouses. And I would like to say that. The points that are here in this executive summary go a really long way towards solving. The goals and the issues that we've had with the boathouses for a long time. And I think it's a really, really good start. I have a couple of nuances I'd like for you guys to think about. First one being. The biggest, in my opinion, the biggest administrative burden to the town is the property tax. Well, I don't know, kerfuffle. That's what I can think of. Way it works now is the town gets the bill. They pay it, then Dorothy has to go write letters to all the different boathouse owners. And keep on us for a couple of months to end up paying the bill. Finally, we pay the bill and the cycle starts all over again the next year. So if we could. It'd be wonderful if we could affect some kind of paperwork where the county would direct bill. Us, and then that would be solved. That's the easiest way. So really, the easiest way to solve this issue is to overtly acknowledge. The ownership is the bus. And I could, I could, I could go on for twenty, thirty minutes on all this stuff, but I won't. But. There's a pretty good reason for doing that. And that's one of them to meet that goal.
Ten seconds?
Ten seconds. All right. So then the agreement would be. The, the lease would be for repairing rights. It would be for. Signable and also can make up how much it's worth.
George, did you have anything else that you wanted? I mean, I know that you're. Three minutes is.
The other things, the other things would just come along. If, if, when you guys are talking about this. You know, I've done a lot of study and a lot of reading about these things. And not just because I own one, but because I, I think it's a good part of Windermere history. So I know a lot about them. And I know just from talking to a lot of people that there's a lot of misunderstandings and a lot of misconceptions. About the boathouses. So if I. Somehow, I don't know if you'll allow it or not, but if I hear something that's I know is incorrect. I don't want you guys making decisions on incorrect assumptions or incorrect facts. So I'd like to be able to raise my hand or something and say, you know, that's really not true. As we're going along. You all have gotten that big packet of information. If you read it. There shouldn't theoretically be any misconceptions, but sometimes there are.
All right. George, thank, thank you for representing both. H B B here i- in some form and fashion as chair as well as your, your own interests as well. So I did want to give you an, an extra couple of minutes and that's for the, the record. We can also, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll circle back as we get working our way through here. I think everybody's pretty well briefed.
Russell, Russell wants to say something I know, but other, the other boathouse owners have told me, I'm not talking, you talk for me. So I'm really talking for three or four other people. So.
Thank you, sir. All right. So, and I know that, Russell, did you want to add comment as well, sir?
Yeah, so Russell Gentry, four oh nine West Second Avenue. And as per commitment to the mayor that I made last summer, I've been here for about seven and a half months now. I guess we're supposed to say how long we've been here. So I've absolutely. Rookie, right? I, I, I respect that. So obviously, a, a lot of the existing council members have been. Privy to the packages and the stuff that George and I have sent over, my thoughts, et cetera. So I just want to thank the consideration that you guys have given this. It does concern me a, a little bit, Councilman McKinley's. You know, statements and stuff, because I don't think it's as cut and dry as to that, that they lay it out. I think that the piece has been debated for a number of years. I think it came up. Obviously, as you know from the packets, because of conditions at one point. I just think it's very convoluted. So with that said. I think that you have the commitment of five individuals that at least have some kind of stake in the game. That we are going to be great tenants of the riparian rights. We're going to spend money, all five have committed to spend the money necessary to make it an enhancement. By and not a deterrent. And that, you know, we want to try to work this out. I, I, I know town council has a lot of stuff. I know attached on the back of this packet is the American Rescue Plan with a whole bunch of enhancements for the city or for the town. And I just think that this probably has been a little bit of a distraction for a number of reasons, but it doesn't have to be that way. I, so I obviously support being a boathouse owner. The, the way that it's outlined in, in the, in the handout or in the executive summary. So thank you again for giving me the, a few moments. All of you that I've had interactions with have been very, very accommodating, courteous and understanding. So I do appreciate all that. I am the new guy, so I will be, the hazing can begin at this point. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry. We appreciate that. And, and I'm glad you're here tonight for comment. Just for the record, I want to make sure that everyone is aware that we have all council members in attendance. As Chris Sap, I see, has joined us a few minutes ago. So thank you, council. Appreciate you all being here for this workshop as well. Any further public comment? Anybody? Did anybody hand to the chat box? All right, good. All right. I see no others for public comment. On the only other comment that we did have was from Ms. Rose, but she is not in attendance. And George, I imagine that you're speaking for her as well. Is that true?
Yes, that's true. As some of you know, her and I share a house. We do not own boat out, a whole boathouse individually. So. She, she asked me to say a few words for her. So her, her recommendation would be the same as mine, is that we.
I, I just wanted to confirm that. All right. Thank you. All right. So at this point, Robert, are you going to present on this item or?
I can present with Councilman Williams.
That's what I was wondering, which one of you guys wanted to, or if you're going to combine it up, that's fine.
But it was something that we both discussed. Again, this is an issue that's been ongoing for quite some time, especially since I've been here. We're looking at the first renewal of the leases back in twenty ten. And again, based on the current leases that they were, that were at the time, they pretty much automatically renewed right after they signed the first lease. So the ten year lease wanted to be a twenty year lease. And then we subsequently had a workshop in lead December. And discussed about the extension of leases that were set to expire in February. And so we had some time for the new council to make a decision on what to do with the five boathouses that are out there. And in between that time, I know Parks and Recreation has discussed it. H B B has discussed it. As far as the Parks and Recreation. They were, their statement from my best of my recollection was that, that, that if they were to be leased out. By new tenants, that they at least have the opportunity to lease out one of the boathouses. As kind of a kayak slash canoe launch area. They're looking at doing maybe a pilot project over, with Windermere Recreation Center. But that was pretty much their only comment to that. Other than that, then it goes to H B B, which is probably the most appropriate. Committee for it to be under consideration because they are on their local registry. And that's where they came up with. Extending the leases with the current tenants with these conditions, again, that they make sure they maintain them up to some historical standards. Which H B B will be like the Architectural Review Committee for them when they do the enhancements to them. In addition to that, they would set up a reasonable rate. And again, all this will come back to town council for final approval because you can't make a decision at a workshop tonight. But you can give consent to give and directions to cap, to staff to work with our legal team to draft whatever agreements you want. Or leases that you want. But again, it would be a ninety nine year lease and, you know, it, it wouldn't be something that would be passed down from generation to generation. It would be something that they would be able to bequeath to their. Their spouse if they were to pass away. And then if they move out of town or if they, you know, pass away. Then it would be up for a public auction, which would have to be advertised and certain conditions would have to be met for the people that would. Submit to, I guess, purchase the lease. Which would be, again, you have to be a town resident to do so. And they would take over the responsibilities of what the previous tenant had, which again is to make sure that the boathouses are kept up. They're maintaining the historical standards and they're paying their bills. If they are to receive more than three code enforcement violations, then they relinquish their lease rights. And then they would have to be forced to sell their interest in that lease. And Councilmember Williams can jump in if there's anything I missed.
I don't think you've missed anything, Robert. We did. I mean, first and foremost, the H B B really was, they didn't want the boathouses to go anywhere. They want them kept up. So from there, it was what was our best path. And that's where the discussion really started. And a lot of it had to come with, you know, there's always been argument on ownership. Because you're dealing with the riparian rights. The state doesn't recognize the ownership of the boathouses. Nobody wants to touch it, you know. The boathouses are over a hundred years old, most of them. And, and from their point of view is, how do we go back on a hundred years of acknowledgement of them being there and being personally owned? And that's kind of where this ninety nine year lease idea came out of. Was how do we keep it moving in the same direction, but also give opportunity? When they, when there's time for transfer for it to be open to anybody, anybody that is a town resident. They did say, and it is in the, in the executive summaries, that it could pass from. From a parent to their children if they lived in town also. That was, that was the precursor. You had to live in town. And that's all I got. Robert, you covered everything else.
Yeah, I think the only one that has a. Amanda Black would be the only one, correct?
No, Faze, Doug and Jerry. Both the Doug girls live in town, but on that note, they'd have to want them to. They may just say, we don't, you know, the boathouses are small. They're not some big, big unit that you can put a big ski boat in. They're not made that way. So, you know, you'd also have to want to take on those responsibilities of caretakers.
Yeah, so from, from a staff perspective, it was trying to find a compromise between, you know, making not only. The current and resolving those issues, but also to afford an opportunity in the future for. Other people to acquire those leases.
Counselor Ramos, can you give us a brief? Summary of riparian rights. And, and the reason I ask this is because there's going to be some confusion here, I suspect. And I think it's always good for us to, to review that as well. So would you mind that?
Absolutely, Mayor. To be a riparian, or actually, let me just start with what riparian rights are. That's the right to use water adjacent to your property. But the key is under Florida statutes, which is, it's in two fifty three point one four one. To have riparian rights, you have to be the owner of the land. That comes up to the ordinary high watermark. So in this instance, the folks that are using the boathouses are not the owners of the property. The town is the owners of the property. Coming up. So that's not the correct term to use here.
That's, that's what I wanted to clarify. There may be some reasons that folks might want to use that terminology. I, I don't know, especially in terms of, because then. Basically, that would elude that you own the land as well. Is that true or no?
Um, it would elude that, but it wouldn't make it the case. I mean, the property, I looked at the property praiser website again tonight. Just to make sure that it was still owned by the town and it is still owned by the town. And I know there was some discussion about the history of the property. And in nineteen eighty four, one of the town representatives asked the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. For an opinion on this. And what they did, they stated that the town is the riparian owner. And the owner of the boathouses, because they're also the riparian owner. So, I, you know, this, that's just a, something that I know was in history and. We won't use that terminology in the lease agreements, because it's not necessary.
Not, it's not necessary to accomplish what has been, what we're discussing tonight. And, and that's, and I just want to clarify that because I don't know that the, I don't want to cause any confusion. And I don't think that for. Unless there's another, George, was there a specific reason? I noted, I noted in the minutes here that you had suggested that. Is there a reason that, that you had suggested that?
The ownership issue?
No, the, the right, you, you specifically used the term riparian rights. So I was just curious.
Essentially what we're talking about. We're talking about leasing the riparian rights to have access to the boat, to act, access and use. The waterway and the boathouses that are on them. So, and that's, if you read the current lease, that's essentially what it says. It doesn't ever say we're releasing a boat. It says releasing the right of access to the houses.
Correct, but we wouldn't use the term riparian because it doesn't fall within what is statutorily defined in Florida law. Because in Florida law, the riparian rights, you have to be the owner of the property to the high water line. To have the ability to use those rights. So in this instance, we would just, we, we could use less or less seaweed. You can use town, boathouse user, we can use whatever we want to use, but it's more of a, it's a contract that we'll come up with.
Yeah, I get that. It's, there seems to be, this is my question. There seems to be some sense that you're saying that riparian rights convey ownership.
I wasn't necessarily saying that. I was saying what the, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection said in nineteen eighty four, when we had looked at some of those.
I read that too, and I thought their logic was faulty by itself.
I was just saying what they said.
And I think those, hey, and, and George, I, I believe those, I believe that was my language and. You know what that's worth. So, you know, I'm just trying to clarify for everybody that. I guess my overall question was at this juncture. Do we need that to get to where we want to go in terms of what we're discussing here tonight for the lease? Can you do, you know, does one negate the other or vice versa? And I think what we understand is that that is not the case.
Trying to reduce the burden on the town, the administrative burden on the town, I think would be great if, if we were somehow. I don't care how it's done, but somehow direct builds for the property tax and just make it easier.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. I've got three council folks with questions here. I believe that. Was first then Tony, then Mandy. Robert, did you want to interject something there real quick?
Yeah, just one point of clarification. I was sent the minutes from the P N R meeting. And it did state that they were in favor of a lottery system as opposed to. Leasing out to the current tenants.
So those were the minutes. Okay. So for the record, those are the minutes from the parks meeting, Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec Committee, yes.
Thank you. All right. Councilperson Martini.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Not, not to get in the weeds on the riparian thing, but it, the town is the owner of the property. That we would be leasing to the boathouse owners, correct? Or lessees. And so does the town not have riparian rights that they could lease or go along with the lease to the lessees?
Yes, the lessees don't have the riparian rights. That's correct.
The lessees don't have them?
No, the town would lease them. If we want to use that terminology, the town would be leasing the town's riparian rights, correct?
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Thank you, counselor.
Council Martini for the clarification. Councilperson David.
So just a clarification for the fairly new guy. So the, the riparian rights and the, the land is owned by the town. What, and the boathouses aren't owned by the town? Why is that?
Councilmember David, we have argued, not argued, but we've looked at all of the background and we have said to the town. Over the past years, when we've looked at this, that the town is the owner of the boathouses.
Quick question on that. And it has to do with what Tony's saying on why don't we. Acknowledge that we own the boathouse to start with. The boathouses, when they were built, who owned the land in front of the boathouses? The town did not. Is that, that's what I, I'm understanding. It was actually belonged to Palmer's. Originally. Where the boathouses are built, who owned that land originally? Any guesses?
Well, I, I mean, it would make sense to me that only the Palmer's could have owned that. It would be my assumption at some point until it was donated for the park, correct?
Okay, when they donate the park, you know, does that automatically negate the ownership of the boathouses? Then this was the discussion we had in H P B. This came back and forth going. How long, you know, could you go, why doesn't we just recognize that we own these things for the last fifty years? The boathouses date back to the nineteen twenties and earlier. That's what we kind of came up with is that was the logic in, in it of how this got separated along the way.
And, and the basis of my question is, you know, I, I see we own the land. I, I see that's, that's given. If we owned the boathouses, that would alleviate the concern that, that many have about the current lessees. If the leases were taken, removing the structure, which is what I think is a, a large concern. And potentially, you know, removing that historical. Structure from, from that here.
The, with the boathouses being on our local historic registry, you cannot legally remove them. Without the approval of the Historic Board and Council and the town. So they're stuck.
As I, as I understood it, that was, that was one of the concerns is if, you know, we went to a lottery system or moved to another. Course of action as far as reallocating the boathouses, that the concern was that we'd lose the historical presence of those boathouses. Is that not the case?
You wouldn't, because you can't change the boathouse from what they are now. It can't be modified. They can't be enlarged. And any repairs and changes has to be approved.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Where, where does it, where does it say that they're on the local historic register?
They was voted in, in the minutes from two thousand, I believe. When was Karen Rinheck mayor?
August ninth, two thousand one.
That, the minutes are in, in the package that George sent out.
I knew it was somewhere. I was just trying to remember where.
They voted them in and acknowledged that's what they, that they would fall under the historic registry. Which is the Windermere Historic Registry.
Which has.
Houses, Town Hall, Cal Palmer and the Old School House.
Okay. Robert, is there any true authority to that?
The, the process in which that they were placed on the historical registry, I think there were some issues with the process. Because we ran into that issue when one of the. because we ran into that issue when one of the homes that was on the local registry was proposed to be demoed. Uh, we could pull that back up, but I think with the current lease, it states that the tenants can remove uh, the items from the boathouse, including the materials. Um, and then the town would have to come back and rebuild in like kind, I believe.
So what I'm, you know. Right as well, Robert. That's what I think raised the question originally for me.
And councillor David is correct. And, and, and that's what I'm just trying to make sure that we understand when we're talking here. There are some things that we kind of know because they're, they're written in front of us. There are some things that, um, like with the town historical registry that is not ironclad uh, to my understanding and based upon its recent historical, um, you know, demolitions and such. So, you know, just, just making sure we're all talking, you know, uh, in, in terms we can all understand. Now, I'm promising you, I've got to get to councillor person David. And, uh, and, and Tony, I apologize, I mixed David and David together and I, I gave you both a new name. You're like a, like a pair now. So.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a couple of questions, actually. Um, mainly, um, one that we're saying that the Palmers, we're, we're thinking the Palmers donated the, the, the land to the park. So it makes it public. So I'm, I'm curious and, and, and I'm not, I, I just don't know. I've tried to do the research. I tried to read the, um, listen to the other workshops, but the sound was bad. Um, I'm just curious how the five families got ownership of these boathouses and it's not a lottery to where anybody has a right to lease is my first question. So if somebody can answer that first, then I'll get to my second one.
George, you want to answer that?
Um, I'll try. The, the boathouses were built circa nineteen ten. Okay, we have a picture that kind of proves that. And I've done some research on the photographer that took all those pictures. And he certainly was in the area during that timeframe. So that all kind of adds up. Remember, the town was not incorporated until nineteen twenty five. So the boathouses were owned, whatever you want, whatever term you want to use. Somebody built them and used them and assumed that they owned them for at least fifteen years before there was the actual town officially town of Windermere. Um, so that's how they got started. Apparently those people didn't start dying or moving or whatever until the nineteen sixties. Because the first quitclaim deed that has been found, I know of, comes from nineteen sixty. And that kind of makes sense. If you had built something in nineteen twenty, you use it for forty years. Now you're old, you don't want it anymore, you're dying, whatever. And so you give it, and they they either didn't have, didn't know, or they only chose to use quitclaim deeds for whatever reason. I can't speculate that. So that's it. For that hundred and ten year period, officially, the town has never claimed ownership. There's been lots of opinions like you're hearing tonight about the town does own them, but officially through leases or documents or whatever, official documents that have been signed, they've never, um, claimed ownership. You want me to address the, uh, historic register thing too or not?
Um.
I mean, there was, there was a question about what, what, um, what authority the historic preservation board has.
Yes, please.
So all that is spelled out in the, uh, the municide code, section three. And I looked at it again the other day and I think the letter of the law was followed explicitly. And you can trace through the paperwork that I sent you all. That there was a historic preservation board meeting. The minutes, I don't know whether the minutes of that meeting are, that, I don't have access to those. But the piece of paper that Carl Patterson, who was the historic board chairman at the time, submitted to the town council as an agenda item. Um, submitted the historic, the boathouses for recommendation for being listed on the historic register. And for that next meeting, the town council voted to to approve that. And so those are the steps essentially that need to be followed to have something listed on the sort of register and they were followed. So I don't understand what the, um, the, the, the miss, I don't know what's wrong with that. I don't know what's, what didn't, wasn't followed. Now, I understand that there were some historic buildings torn down. I questioned about those when I became a member of the historic board. And they told me, the historic board told me that the town or somebody did come to them and they, I don't think they ever wrote out a piece of paper, but they orally gave permission to tear the house down. So I don't know if there was paperwork that followed it up and that was a mistake if there wasn't because they should have written the, um, I think it's called a letter of, I don't know what it's called. It has official name. Um, so yeah, there, there, over time, there hasn't been some things done correctly. But as far as the listing of the properties, I'm pretty sure that they were done correctly.
Thank you, sir. Councillor person David, you still have your hand up?
I do. I have one more question, um, that I'd like to propose. So if it is, if, if the town owns the, um, the property, um, my question with the lease, I'm having some issues with the fact that, um, that so little rent. Um, have we had the property appraised in a while? Um, I, I just know as a homeowner, um, I would not be taking anything less than what my house is worth um, as rent or in a sale. And so I'm just curious of why the rent is so low and is that hurting the town in the long run?
So the rent was set in the lease that was, so, I mean, let me, let me try to clarify as quickly as I can. So basically there was a stackable lease that was done. And, um, I've never been a particular fan of that process, although it, i- it is what it is and it was done as it was written. Um, but it didn't have the, it, 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 it's not the perfect way to do it. Let's just say that. But it was done that way. It works that way. And I believe the lease rates were set within that. At this meeting, we can discuss lease rates, um, or we can ask for, uh, the staff to uh, provide us with some information that would help us set a lease rate. Um, and that would be part of this agreement as well. And that lease rate can reflect whatever council views as appropriate.
That's, that's the, uh, position that the staff was going to take was between now and whenever we have the leases drafted up, if that's what the council wants, we'll come up with a figure of a, um, monthly rental rate. Um, but understanding too is that, you know, we're still asking those tenants or whoever should take over the, the leases that they're going to put in some, um, you know, money into adding those facilities as well. So we need to take that into account.
And, and I think that council's been pretty good, uh, in terms of, you know, working out things that are reasonable, understanding what we want, you know. Uh, listen, the town's not in this for money. Uh, I mean, this is more about, we want to make sure that they're maintained appropriately. And, and my biggest concern when we got to this point a few months ago, we all knew this would be coming down the pike again. That I didn't want subsequent councils to have to continue to deal with this challenging issue because there's a, there's a lot right and a lot wrong with all of it. And we want to just make, I would like, you know, it's always been our goal in the last ten years of everything that we've done is to do our best to make things orderly, clean, um, you know, a hundred percent to the letter of the law that we can possibly do. And I never like to kick challenging situations to another council down the line uh, because it's, it's easier to do so. So what we did was we extended this opportunity to extend the leases a little bit while we kind of gathered ourselves to work on this, on this item in a better way. Um, you know, I don't know that I have a preference for which way we go. Uh, but I certainly want to make sure that, you know, we do it a hundred percent uh, uh, the, the right way that we most possibly can and do what's fair for everybody. So that's, uh, you know, and, and noting that these are, these are, these are challenging, you know, and I mean, I said this six months ago too, when we first met, you know, these are, these are folks that have had these boathouses for a long time. They have deeds, um, they have leases, um, but there's also the feeling that, hey, some folks would um, prefer to have more access or, or more, um, use for other folks in town or to do a lottery. Um, my biggest goal here is, well, no matter what council decides, is that we're able to do it in a way that, you know, is really clear and concise and doesn't, you know, kind of pass down this challenging situation again and again. Because it's, you know, I think everybody feels that it's not a lot of fun to, to, uh, you know, to put these kind of situations to a, a place that they're workable. So the, the, the one other piece that I had was that, so I, I was listening to George talk about the, the, the historical agreement. So if you have the historical agreement and, and that's valid, then I'm not so sure how you can take it apart in the lease. So, um, if you're going to follow that process. So, uh, you know, maybe I'm misunderstanding it, but that was kind of one of my takeaways from that. So I see councillor person David's hand up again and I, councillor person Sap, did you have a comment? I thought I saw you light up as well there.
Yeah, you know I do.
All right. So you haven't spoken yet. Let's let you speak and then we'll go back to councillor person David.
Yeah, I, I kind of, um, I'm not a real state attorney by, by any means. So just my little bit of knowledge here, may have to have councillor Ramos, uh, jump in. But just to kind of get our heads around, because we keep asking about ownership, um, you know, this is real property. Uh, once you build a structure on there, it should be a fixture and therefore becoming part of that real property unless I'm mistaking that, mistaken that a dock uh, does not classify as, uh, you know, a structure or a fixture on the property. So at some point when this land was transferred over to the town, whether it was donated, sold or however it may be transferred, we know it is in the town's name, uh, that those boathouses would um, uh, go with it. Uh, there are quick claims that I see, but I'm not sure of the validity of them. I mean, quick claims are the transfer of property, but again, stop me if I'm wrong. It doesn't guarantee any type of ownership. That's when we would use, uh, you know, warranty deeds, um, you know, so there's no protection against that, you know, break in the chain of title. So I would think it's fairly clear from that, that, uh, you know, the town not only owns the land, because we see record of that, but, but owns the boathouses. Um, am, am I wrong in that kind of thought processes? You know, I'm listening to everybody talk here.
I, I don't believe you are. Um, councillor Ramos, did you want to confirm or confer that?
Uh, no, I agree. Um, the, really, when we did the title search a long time ago on the property, the, all the title company could come up with was the quitclaim deeds and a quitclaim deed only allows you to transfer whatever interest you have. So if you have no interest, you transfer no interest. So we, we just don't know. We don't know what happened. And there can be an instance where a person or a city or a county owns a piece of property and someone else owns a building that sits on that piece of property. But that's in a document which shows that somebody else owns a building or structure or dock or whatever. And we just never had the information, enough information to put that together, unfortunately, in this system.
And to that point, I think part of what's happening here, and, and if I can frame this out and give it a little framework, part of what's happening here is that we're not, there, there's a couple of ways to go. If we're going, if, if council is comfortable and feels like we're going to go with this option that, that we're talking about tonight in terms of that lease, the ownership, I don't know, the ownership piece is incredibly important for the past. What we're saying, I believe at this point would be that moving forward, you know, that that's how we're, we're going to recognize what is there and what has been there for many, many years, because we don't have the perfect records on either side. And I may be wrong with that, but, but then I saw councillor person Martini.
Yeah, that, that's my point, Mayor, is, you know, to, to make sure we have clarity now. Um, right. Because ninety nine years from now, I guess, uh, council will be dealing with again, who, who has?
Androids.
Uh, and that segues, where does ninety nine years come from?
Typical land lease is where it popped up.
Um, I, I'm not sure. I'm not saying I'm agreeing or disagreeing with it, but I guess on the back of that too, um, I, I did have conversation with staff in regards to some of the wording on here. And I, I, I thought maybe the intent after the conversation was that the lease would be treated closer to kind of a right of survivorship. You know, so meaning husband and wife as opposed to passing it down, you know, to, to other generations. But, you know, as this meetings went on, it, there seems to be a tent, at least from the historic board, that it was to pass it on to, to family members below. Um, and I'm not sure if I'm necessarily in agreement with that. Um, be fine with it staying with husband and wife and that right of survivorship. But, uh, you know, once that breaks, uh, you know, both are deceased or or any of that nature that, you know, the property is relinquished and then goes into whatever process it may be, whether it be a lottery system or, or a waiting list, uh, so on and so forth.
Fair enough. Thank you, councillor person Sap. Um, I owe, I owe councillor person Martini one, but I think that I owe councillor person David one first.
Uh, just real, one quick question, you know, going along the same, uh, train of thought that councillor person Sap is going. Um, you know, when, when did the Palmers, uh, donate the land for the park? Because to me, I think that the quitclaim deed was probably, um, post that if is what I'm, what I'm thinking. Does everybody, does anybody have that date? When it, because as I'm seeing it, that's when the town acquired the ownership of this, this riparian rights and all of the, the rights that go along with it.
Do you have that date? I just can't find it right now. I actually have a copy of the, uh, the transmittal. But I'll look for it. I'll figure that date when I find it.
George, if you'll look for that, do you mind looking for that? And I'll go to councillor person Martini.
What I did with.
And just one quick point, uh, before you depart me, uh, Mayor, is that, you know, my thought is, is that is the case and this quitclaim deed is, is, you know, null and void. If, if all of the boathouses were transferred to the town with the donation by the Palmers, then all of this subsequent action is, is mute in my opinion.
Councillor person Martini, I'm going to let you go ahead and ask your question while we get that date. And then I think we'll circle back to councillor person David's two questions there.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and, and this sort of relates to that. I have a ton of questions, but I'm just going to talk about this one. That councillor person Sap and David talked about, i- if the current lease indicates that the ownership of the boathouses reverts to the town at the end of the lease, is that correct, George or, or Heather? Um, or, or the owner or the lessee can dismantle the structure. And then, and technically according to councillor person Williams, they're not allowed to dismantle the structure. Then wouldn't the structure automatically revert to the ownership of the town when this current lease ends and before the new leases are drawn up? Making it a moot point as per councillor person David. Who's on first?
I'll do Heather. Um, relative to the current existing leases, again, and I read it exactly like councillor member David and, um, Martini, is that the ownership is identified as the town. Um, and that's clear in those, those documents.
Yes. That is correct.
Shortest I've ever heard from an attorney.
So I mean, any subsequent, if there is a lawsuit, let's say that one of the current tenants did file a lawsuit again, that'd be, you know, part of the, uh, the response of the town, you know, and, um, hopefully just went on summary judgment.
So moving forward, I'm sorry, Heather, go ahead.
No, I would say I would agree with that, um, unless someone finds some additional evidence or some other indication of. evidence or some other indication of ownership that we haven't seen. Correct.
I had a date for you. You ready?
Sure, go ahead.
The Palmer's donated or whatever, transferred to the town, YF, which is Palmer Park, um, nineteen twenty-five, October the sixteenth, nineteen twenty-five. Interestingly, as a side note to this, none of this is easy. None of this is simple. As a side note to that, if you look at that little sliver of land that's on the water side of the corner there, palm and pine, which really pine, the little sliver of land that we're talking about that the town owns that gives the town riparian rights, the county describes that piece of land as that land lying south of block F. So this piece of paper right here does not transmit that piece of property. I don't know how the town got that piece of property. But if the, if the county's right, now, I'm not saying the county's always right. That's if the county is right, then that piece of property is transmitted some other, in some other way.
So again.
A little bit more.
So again, I, I mean, I, so to, to all of those points, to councilperson David's point, to the point that I made earlier about, you know, if then, then this, you know, I mean, really what this, you know, and just in my opinion, what this comes down to is what is council's direction, um, in terms of moving forward versus, I, I mean, you know, uh, versus trying to figure out the past, because even though the past is certainly important, I think we know that there's, that there's a, you know, quite a bit of right on each side. Um, but I mean, really what we're, what we're trying to map out here is the future. Um, because that's, you know, I mean, I, I have no doubt that if, that if, uh, council wants to say these all belong to the town, then they are, are likely to, uh, to, to persevere in that, in that judgment and, and win that judgment. Um, but that doesn't, you know, we, we do things with that in mind. If there's a, a goal moving forward, I want us to also think about, is that something we're comfortable with, knowing that there is, there is quite a bit of right on both sides here. So, and that's, that's what has always made this tough. And here we are in those, in, in that time for that tough conversation. Um, so that's kind of what I'm looking for, you know, uh, in terms of guidance for staff. Russ, I see you there. Let me, let me get a little conversation in here. Um, and I, and I certainly, I'll, I'll get back to you. And I also see that, uh, that Ms. Joyce Rose has joined us and she wanted to make comment as well. And if she still does, I will certainly, uh, make that happen. See, I killed all the, I killed all the conversation.
You, you must be hacking parties.
Mayor, I, I, I completely agree with you. Um, where I was getting that with my, you know, my questions is obviously, you know, there, there is a past here. There is, um, there are people that are currently leasing these boathouses. Um, you know, it, to, to me, it almost seems like we need a hard reset on this. Um, establish the ownership of those boathouses, um, you know, and move forward. That's, you know, that's, that's kind of where my questioning lies is, you know, I, I want to, I want to have at least a council, you know, vote perspective on moving forward and do we need a hard reset? Or do we stay status quo? Which kind of, again, albeit for the recommended 99 years, it still kicks the can down the road, 99 years. So you almost want to do a hard reset now, reallocate this, reclaim the owner and then move forward is kind of my thought process, just picking out loud.
Which it feels, it, it, go ahead, Robert.
I was saying, in the new, um, lease terms, uh, we'll make sure that everything is specific as to ownership, um, so on and so forth. So there's no questions in the future.
So one of the things that happened when Robert and I talked about this a little earlier today, you know, I, I can be pretty simple. I, I, so, so you take them, then what do you do? Um, you know, you win, but, you know, and, and if you want to put a win on it, but then you have to manage that, be fair about that, you know, it kind of creates a whole new piece. The other way to go here is you say, you know, you reset the ownership piece, you take the question away. Um, but you allow the individuals who are currently utilizing them to continue to lease them for a period of time. Doesn't have to be 99 years, can be 50 years. It can be, it can be to, to councilperson Sap's point, it, it can be a different level of, of survivorship. Um, so there's some different ways to look at that.
I guess one more thing to add too, is that the new lease agreement will not look anything like the old one. It will have all of the new provisions. It will be up to date. It will have established the, hopefully the fair market value or whatever value the town wants to put on it and require indemnification, all of those protections for the town as well.
Agreed.
If, if we can get a pulse of the council of whether or not they want to continue the leases and/or go to a lottery system, um, then we can figure out which direction we can possibly go through.
All right. So let's poll council on those two, uh, questions. Um, we'll start with councilperson David.
I'm not opposed to renewing the leases. I think 99 years is a little too steep for my, for my blood, but, um, I'm not opposed to moving forward that.
Thank you, councilperson David. Councilperson Williams.
I'm in for, in favor of moving forward with the leases.
Any, um, are you, timeframe?
Um.
Ninety-nine or are you flexible?
I, I think it needs to be longer, not shorter. Um, so 10 years, 15 years plus at least. I mean, these were last ones were 20 and we're right here. Um, and I was more looking at it going, we want to see changes and changeovers without having to go, okay. Every time we change it over, we're having to rewrite and renegotiate a lease versus a long-term lease. All, everything's set in stone with increases in provisions for cost of living and all those kinds of ideas can be worked in there. But not having to constantly reset every time there's an ownership or a leasing change. You know, somebody wants to give theirs up or they move out of town, that we're not mired down with a whole bunch of different negotiations. And that was kind of the reason of going more long-term. So it was all set in stone.
Thank you. Uh, councilperson Martin.
Um, I'm not opposed to moving forward, uh, with the leases. Um, uh, are we going to discuss the cost, fair market value or some other, uh, you know, monetization for the benefit of the, the town and if these, uh, boathouses do come up for sale, does the town benefit from those proceeds? And I don't, uh, feel that we should, um, make it so that, I mean, I agree with councilman Sap about husband and wife survivorship, but that should be it. Once somebody leaves town or they pass away, uh, and, or their property's sold, then it should be up for grabs for other people. I don't think we should extend it, you know. You know, children are certainly welcome to bid on the auction, you know, from my perspective, but, um, you know, and only town residents, and we need to make sure that no one can rent them out from an owner. Uh, this, you know, I've got a million questions about, you know, how to fine tune that.
So let me get the pulse first and then we'll come back. If we're all kind of moving in the same direction, then we can begin to give, uh, give staff some guidance and councillor Emma some guidance on how we may want that to look. Um, and, and, and we'll get the best product we can here tonight. So we get as close as we can be on the first shot. Councilperson Sap.
Um, hard reset. Uh, we'll start from ground zero with our current leaseholders. Um, I can go kind of line by line if you want me to, or if you want to go line by line with each council member, I'll leave it up to you, mayor.
Let me, um, well, I mean, I think that, so if I'm not mistaken, that, that sounds like, uh, the majority. Uh, I'll do my best to summarize here. The majority is looking for kind of a hard reset. We want to have a really ironclad document. Um, one that denotes, um, ownership, uh, one that does, uh, bequeath some rights of survivorship. Uh, and for, uh, basically I got a feel of a period of time somewhere between, let's say, 20 or I think I heard 15 and 50, right? Everybody's nodding.
All right, all right. Well, councilperson Williams said between 10 and 15 minimum.
Ten and.
Right.
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm more for 50.
You, you're more towards 50? And I think councilperson Sap was more towards.
I, I like that every decade.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as they come up with a clean lease where then it's a quick, you know, uh, you know, either list or lottery system right after that. You know, we don't want to go through this process for sure, for sure, every.
No, no, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we do. So I mean, I think we at least probably want to stay with something in the, in the, in the, the 20 to, to a, another number, um, range. So we can have something, again, I, I really don't want to keep passing it down. Uh, hopefully we'll have something. And I, I agree, there shouldn't be a burden on the, the town. Um, and we want to have something that makes those, those boathouses as nice as they, uh, can possibly be. Um, and also again, you know, kind of here, we're looking at the future, but we're also trying to be respectful of the past and from where we've come.
Well, I'd be agreeable to the 20 years if you want to.
Okay. Counsel, any further comment?
One quick, uh, two quick ones. Um, councilman Martini brought up, um, you know, where would the town benefit? We talked about, um, profit sharing, anything above what they paid for them, because all these guys paid something for these leases.
Right.
To the people they did quick claim deeds from. You know, some of them is recently is a year ago.
Sure.
Um, and some of them are, I mean, the phase date back forever. So, um, of going, okay, once they get their basic money back, you know, up and beyond whatever the auction or the open market bid goes to, as maybe we put a percentage in of the profit goes back to the town, HPV or whatever, for maintenance, for grounds and things like that. Um, uh, cause I'm not for, you know, people like putting it up for open market to transfer it, but where does that money go? Are you, are we deciding that we own the boathouses right now? So everybody who paid for them in the last 10 years, too bad. So if somebody comes in, says bids and says, I'll pay $20,000, is, does the town take all that money? Where does that money come from?
Well, that leads to one of my other questions is can, can a homeowner sell the boathouse to someone else in town? Probably not if the town owns the boathouse on a hard reset.
That was kind of, that was where we were playing with where, you know, where are we going to go with this, you know? Um, how much do we want to fight about past monies and past?
I mean, do we really want to get into auctions and all that? I mean, why, why wouldn't it be just a simple lottery system for rights to sign a lease at whatever.
Yeah, that's.
Market value is at the time, because what we're talking about, you know, is a triple net lease, you know, somebody taking care of the taxes, insurance and maintenance, which is not unusual. Uh, you know, in, in term, terms of a lease. So I'm not sure where the profit sharing part, you know, comes from.
So you're saying to hell with everybody who's just paid quick claim deed money?
So, so councilman Williams, I, I think, so I, and I see, so I see the, the challenge here, right? So, and this is the reason why I believe the way to go is a longer lease because that helps with that.
Mm-hmm.
Because there is a certain amount of that going on here. Let, let, let's just call it what it is. We, we are saying to some degree, you know, no, we're going to enforce this lease. We are going to say that we then own that. So the only way to negate that pain, not that you're obligated to do so, but one way to negate that pain is to make it for a longer period of time with the survivorship piece. That's, I think that's what I read here as part of that compromise. I see councilperson David.
Yes. Then I go back to my question of the five families, because there's 3,000 residents. Why, and I get the history, but if we are going to do a rest, a hard restart, then there's, there's other residents who may want to have access and might want to be able to have usage of it. So I, I guess that's where I go. The question is why the five? Um, you know, because I, there's so many residents who may want to have that opportunity, who won't get it if we keep the leases at 99 years.
Yeah, but anytime they go to sell or move out of town, it goes to public, it goes to a public.
Lottery.
I hope that was made clear. The thought process was trying to balance out the keeping it, uh, out into the open. So everybody had a chance to get one when they come up and.
But if we leave it the way it is, then it'll be passed down to family. I guess what I'm saying. So I like, I like, um, councilman Sap's idea of spouse, because then it, then it comes up to that, you know?
I, we don't, I don't think anybody sees a problem with that. Um, the whole children, there's only two families that it even remotely is involved with. One's own has had one of the boathouses for 40 plus years. Um, and they may or may not, because there's going to be restrictions on the upkeep. Right now, we have none of that in the leases. And that's kind of the problem and the reason they look the way they do. So.
The other.
Hmm.
Well, and, and to your point, Andy, that, and that makes sense. You know, the other piece though, you know, I'm looking at Mr. Gentry here who bought one a year ago.
Yep.
Um, you, you know, that's, that's a, a different equation. So I'm trying to, trying to build out something that balances those two. Um, you know, again, uh, you know, I think that we can pull that off. We'll just have to come up with a reasonable number and a reasonable length of time. And, you know, again, something that, um, that'll work. I think the, you know, the piece here is there, there's also that whole part of, you know, I guess, and, and I, I think what I want to do is try to answer Manny's question is in terms of why the five? I mean, I think because those five, a lot of those five people were here 30, 40, 50 years ago when, you know, there weren't 3,000 or 4,000 people here. Um, and it was a much smaller piece and, you know, uh, the way a lot of these things were handled was, you know, not to be nostalgic, but, you know, a, a big part of the reason that I, you know, I live in this community is because when it came time to sell the piece of property where I live today, rather than putting it on, in the Sentinel, you know, Mr. Luft went down and sat next to my father-in-law on a swing and said, you want to buy this piece of property? Um, and that's kind of how things were done. Uh, you know, it doesn't mean that's how we have to continue to do things forever. Don't get me wrong, but I, I think I do want to put a nod to that if I can. And I think council does too, because I feel like that's pretty close to where we're getting. Um, we're just going to work out some specs. And I think what I'll do is if it's okay, I'll give, you know, maybe every councilperson, you know, give me your top four for staff. Um, and then we'll build out a document and, and get it to everyone for review. Is that, would that be acceptable? And, and, you know, for preparation for a vote at the next meeting? All right. Who wants to go first on their top four? I bet it's councilperson Martini. I bet he's got a big list.
All right. My number one requirement, Kim, the, the the body of water where these things are located, it's a no-name lagoon. Can we rename it the Gary Bruin Lagoon? I'm kidding. That's not one of my top four, but.
It rhymes really nicely.
Does rhyme nicely. We should get a sign made. Um, my top four, going back to the list. I don't really have a preference on, on timeframe. Um, I think, you know, 20 to 50 years in there. Um, obviously owners can only be town residents and no rentals to anybody else. Uh, I don't know if it's, if you could, I prefer not to be rented to anyone, especially, you know, someone who doesn't live in town. I don't know if, if the option is available to, to rent to other town residents, but, um, as far as bequeathing, uh, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with going from generation to generation. I don't think that's fair to potential future boathouse, uh, owners, lease lessies. Uh, I'm fine with husband and wife. I don't think that's fair to potential future boathouse uh owners, lease lessies, I, I'm fine with husband and wife. Um. And you know, obviously, if the person sells their house, then boathouse does not automatically go up, go with the house. It goes, you know, and cannot be part of the advertisement or the, you know, the uh marketing of the house, because in that case, if, you know, person's moving out of town, if they're moving from one house to another in town, I think it's okay to keep it, but if they're moving out of town, then the boathouse goes up for grabs to, you know, whatever system we come up with to make that happen. Um. I know that's a lot, sorry.
No, no, that's good, it's good, it's good stuff. I'm gonna, so before we go to the next councilperson, Councilor Ramos, any, anything that doesn't sound like it'll work in there?
Nope, all of this, those four points from councilmember Martini sound fine to me.
Thank you, ma'am. Robert, anything from your perspective, sir?
No, it sounds good, and then as far as the reset and identify who the ownership is, and then we can always do a fair market um appraisal of to establish a rental rate, that'll be part of the um approval of the leases, if that's the consent of council. So we can figure that out later on.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Sorry, Mayor, one more thing, is there any possibility of, of having these boathouses uh put on an actual, or not an actual, but a, you know, a grander scale historic registry?
So. Preservation.
So that, I mean, you would have to go to, to the National Register, I believe, would be next, um, I certainly don't have any objection to looking at that. Um.
Robert, is there a state historic preservation uh registry?
There's a.
Might cause you some problems, though.
Yeah, oh, well, I know, I'm aware of that. George?
If I may.
Yeah, George, go ahead.
Preservation Board already voted to try to pursue national historic listing for the boathouses. It really is not a state registry, the registry comes from listing it on the National Registry. So that's, that's how it works. You actually apply to the state, and they basically forward it to the national level, and then the national level decides, and the state level decides what the plaque says and all that other stuff. So it's a cooperation between the state and the nationals, uh, Department of Interior, how that gets done. The Historic Board voted to do it, nobody volunteered to take that up, it's quite a process to uh do all that paperwork, but um, we're gonna work on that.
So, yeah, and that, so George, that would have to come to council as well. Um, you know, and all, all I say is, I, I certainly, anything that we can do to preserve history, I, I want to support, I just want to make sure that we are that we would not be inadvertently um putting ourself in a giant hole with that. Uh, sometimes the the specifications and the specificity of what has to be done to maintain or fix or repair can make it too expensive to be of value, so I just want, I want to be careful with that. But, uh, you know, there's a lot of people we have in town that have a good mind for that stuff, and we'll let them check all that out. And if uh Historic Board wants to recommend that to council, we can put it on the agenda.
And I've looked into that kind of stuff, too, and it's, to me, it doesn't seem to be as onerous as.
Okay.
It's been made to be in the past here at Windermere, if you know.
Okay, uh, understood, and I appreciate that, thanks, just want to make sure, not opposed, just want to make sure. All right, we're gonna move to uh councilperson Sapp.
Um. I would say no more than twenty-five years, uh, non-transferable. Um. Maybe explore for subsequent leaseholders to move down uh to ten years or something of that nature. You know, giving an opportunity for this equity to kind of be paid off for, you know, regain through that longer lease period. Um. Definitely want to have a minimum right, uh, you know, maximum right or survivorship, meaning, you know, husband and wife. Um, a triple net lease, uh, you know, which would be taxes, insurance and maintenance at fair market value, and considering the maintenance involved, we want to be fair. And then, of course, probably the biggest thing is, uh, you know, resets and with the current uh uh leaseholders, but in black and white, that is sound proper, town's property.
So my only question um for staff on that is the triple net lease, if the if the lease or if the leasing is uh responsible for the maintenance, we probably wouldn't build that into a lease, would we?
Yes, we would.
We would, okay, good.
Definitely.
All right, thank you.
We want.
Good idea, councilperson Sapp.
All right. Other on that matter, and said, again, if there is a certain amount of code enforcement actions against the tenant uh, or the property, then they would automatically relinquish their rights to that lease.
So we, we build it into the lease, we don't charge them for it, though, I think I, I said, I think I said what I was saying wrong. It's specified in the lease, but we're not charging them for maintenance, because that would infer that someone else is doing the maintenance, they're responsible for doing all the maintenance.
Yeah, what, what I mean by tri- triple net is, ob- obviously, they pay the town the, 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 the actual rent or lease fee, but it's their responsibility to pay the taxes, whether it be to the town or however, uh, that.
Or we set it up.
Put together, and then they, out of their own pocket, whether that maintenance is, you know, five thousand dollars a year, a hundred dollars a year, or ten thousand dollars a year for repairs, that, that's built in.
Perfect, all right, thank you. I appreciate you guys letting me clarify that.
Can I ask a quick question of George? Like, what is the current cost of, of having a boathouse for a year, you know, all inclusive? Including the rent, insurance, uh?
Um, well, the rent is somewhere, it must be somewhere around five hundred dollars a year right now. It started off at four hundred and it's gone up with the CPI. I don't really know, I only pay half cuz of Joyce. I think it's just hanging around five hundred dollars right now, and the, the property taxes are, I think, somewhat close to that.
And then you have maintenance, insurance.
Yeah, we do have to have, I mean, the town requires that we have an insurance policy, and so, yes, we have that. And whatever maintenance, the maintenance, you know, it shouldn't be amortized, but it comes in bits and pieces, it comes in groups.
Okay, thank you.
But you might spend three thousand, five thousand dollars in one year and not spend any more for ten years, so.
George, um, is it fair to say, and this is something that I know we've discussed with some of the owners, that because of the uncertainty of where we're going with the lease, a lot of the owners have not put in, you know, ma- you know, larger maintenance items for, for concern that it may not pay off, right?
I think that's true right now, um, I know that some have done some maintenance.
Right, I saw like a new roof on one of them for sure.
Yeah, some have been waiting to hear what happens with this whole thing.
Okay.
That's true.
All right. Councilperson David.
Yeah, I think, uh, um, I prefer a shorter timeframe, I think years is the max, um, from my perspective, I like it. If only a spousal survivorship, not any extended family. Um, in-town resident is an absolute must, and um, one of the things I've just ki- kind of been nugging through here is, you know, I, I see the three code enforcement proceedings, um, but what after that? So I, you know, I throw out there for discussion, potentially like a deposit or something to restore any deficiencies in the boathouse going forward. And I don't know the best way to do that, there's several ways of doing it, but, you know, um, how we do that, I think, is, is still to be determined.
Thank you, sir. And councilperson David.
Um, I'm, I'm comfortable with the, the, the twenty, twenty-five year mark, um, definitely not pass facile. Um, before it's up for a lottery, and um also for the fair market value, uh, that, just repetitive, so I only have three.
Sounds good. Uh, last but not least, councilperson Williams.
Thank you, um. I'm fine with the, you know, keeping it just between spouses, I am very much thinking on the longer term, and only because of the interest they all already have in these boathouses of quick claim deeds that they paid. Um, as far as market value on each lease, my concern would be, they all vary in such different in conditions and needs at this point. You know, somebody just put about, just put a boathouse roof on, somebody else needs one, how do you go, well, we're gonna charge everybody the same and require them to do the maintenance? There's no level kind of playing field there. Um, so I would be more or less on keeping the rental rate maybe a little bit lower in the first five years, and then escalate it up into a higher market as they've become repaired and better maintained. Um, you've got five boathouses that are all individuals. Um, and I'm not talking about who uses them, each one has its own set of problems and costs. So trying to just to go, okay, it's gonna cost everybody five hundred bucks a month or, or a thousand dollars a month, well, at some point, somebody's gonna say, well, the town's got to at least bring it up to a certain position. Uh, a certain quality for me to go in at that rate. So those are the, you know, the other pieces, and that's the reason I had pushed for something longer, longer than twenty, probably longer than twenty-five, because you've got um recent owners and a lot of maintenance coming on right now, so it's hard to justify hanging on to these things, or if they pass on them and move down the road, how are you gonna get the next guy that's willing to spend, you know, ten thousand dollars in repairs and rent on top of it? George, quick question, how many times, how many turnovers have they been in the last five years or ten years? How many boathouses have sold?
Uh, three, as far as I know.
Three in the last five years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Last two years, really.
Okay, they're starting to become more prevalent, so it definitely um, on the reception that they're held forever. Um, that's, that's definitely coming around, so I just look at it going, where do we find that balance? Um, on, on moving forward with these things. They're all so different, is how do you evaluate which ones are they flat rate, or is the one that's slightly bigger gonna be worth more? And how much do we spend to figure this out?
Anything else, sir? That was like just one big one, right?
Question, quick question, sorry. I, I'm good with pretty much everything that we've talked about, other than the length. Um. If the town says they're ours, their ownership, are they public property, and does this become a a park for people to hang out and jump off to Bird Island at? Just a question.
Oh, you had to say it, didn't you?
Sorry.
Had to bring it up there, so, um, so, yeah, I, I also want us to be careful with the kind of, you know, cake and eat it too thing, so um, I think basically what you'd look for is probably a standard rate, um, a minimal expectation of, of maintenance. Um. You know, I, I know that there, you know, a lot of folks have deferred, uh, just because, you know, we've been waiting to kind of see where this is gonna work out. Now, the flip side of that is you have to make it long enough to make sense, so, you know, I'm, I'm kind of more in the twenty-five year category uh, with a, with a fair rental rate that's established by council and attached to CPI post that um, for me, what I would want to see uh is an improved maintenance sooner than later. Uh, because I believe that, you know, for some folks who are maybe not so supportive of this direction, that is a part of, of their hesitation um, in-town residents and spouses. I saw a hand up from councilperson Martini.
Yeah, quick question, I'm probably gonna regret asking this, but who determines what, well, who will determine what maintenance is needed? We don't need to answer that today, and should we maybe consider a consider these as a whole, instead of five individual uh boathouses, and, and have like a condo fund to uh, to cover costs and, and kind of balance out, like councilperson Williams was saying, balance out the level of maintenance on, on the, the boathouses themselves. Just thoughts.
Bill, are you thinking?
A definitive answer.
Council would take on the maintenance burden of that?
I can give you a definitive answer.
Hang on, George, George, hang on, George, go ahead and let councilperson David respond.
Right.
It's, it's okay, I, I'd love for you to run, but I'll, I'm gonna get back to you. I promise. Councilperson David.
I was just asking, uh, councilperson Martini, if, if he's uh advocating for uh the town to take on the maintenance um of, of these, of these units um with a central fund, was that, was that what your point was?
Oh, well, I'm thinking that, you know, that's an option uh that maybe we should think about, like, uh, how are we gonna, how are we going to enforce? Of, you know, the fact that um owner sees boathouse needs maintenance, and who's gonna determine that it needs the, the maintenance? Is it gonna be the town determining that, or is the individual boathouses owner's gonna determine that? I think George has an answer for that, or HPV, I guess.
True.
I think HPV was, but go ahead, George.
Because they're listed on the historic register, the HPV has the authority and responsibility of enforcing maintenance, enforcing um, all that stuff, they already have that authority.
Okay.
Do anything, it's already taken care of.
So.
Let the HPV run with it.
And they can set the standards in which that the tenants would be able to adhere to, meaning the look, the feel, so on and so forth.
Okay, good, thank you.
So, Robert, we, we would have to develop that standard, right, or, or is, as George says, does that does that actually exist? I'm sorry, I, I wish I knew for sure, I don't think I've ever seen it.
So, it's in the municipal code, it's uh loosely defined, I wouldn't say it's specifically defined, but it's loosely defined in the municipal codes, section three, you have it in that notebook I sent you, that's in there, so, um, you can look at it at the leisure.
All right, I just want to make sure that it's, it's good enough to, to get us where we want to go and specific enough.
Yeah, we, we would put in, again, HPV would set standards, and we would make sure that we task them to get those standards in place as soon as possible. Um, so again, everybody's on the same playing field as far as what their expectations are uh for the continuation of the leases.
Councilperson Sapp.
Uh, what I'd be willing to, to look at is uh, uh, gi- give a grace period of sorts, so we'll set a fair market rate now, but maybe it takes effect in twelve months to give a twelve-month period to allow everybody to get up to par in that level playing field, because what I don't particularly want to see is, you know, twelve different, or excuse me, five different rates uh, and overcomplicate this, and I don't know if we want to have staff put together, you know, a cam of sorts or a common area maintenance, uh, you know, that we're handling, cuz, you know, the whole point of this exercise was to, you know, to make it easier on you know, the town uh, too, so. You know, just a thought, I'd be friendly to that, to give a little bit of a grace period of, or a reprieve of some sort on that that monthly cost, so they can get everything up to par.
Yeah, we'd have to monitor that somehow, but, all right, that could be done, I'm, you know, I'm trying again to, I don't want to make a big administrative burden for everybody, but I do want to you know, certainly amenable to doing something that would, that would stimulate the, the maintenance and upkeep of, of said boathouses.
I, I guess be similar to if you bought in a community, uh, vacant lot, generally, they put a restriction that you have to build within a twelve or eighteen month period, so something similar to that. Uh, you know, put a fire under, you know, some rear ends to get them, you know, up to par.
Fair enough. Counsel, any further comment on this particular item? Seeing none, um, staff, do we have enough direction?
Yes, we do, um, I think we have enough direction to go ahead and uh create a new lease, and then also work with HPV on setting uh standards to be a condition of the lease.
All right, thank you, everybody, I know that's a it was a good but difficult conversation, hopefully, we, we, we have ourselves to a place that um, provides compromise and, and reasonableness for all. All right, moving on, we're going to the uh twenty twenty-one American Rescue Plan Act, um. I know Robert's gonna present on this a bit, um. Basically, just to kind of do a brief framework out, there's funding that is uh coming from the United States Treasury as part of the American Rescue Act, which is part of the major COVID relief, this is, this is a over-trillion-dollar plan that will drop uh, funds direct to uh both state, counties and municipalities. Um. There, there's a lot of uh. Um, there, there's a lot of continuing guidance becoming, uh, available for these projects. Uh, but it's starting to shape up, even though the, uh, like you say, the comment period is ongoing and I believe that that goes on until sometime in mid-June. Uh, but, uh, we're, we're really starting to see some shaping up of some of the things that we are going to be able to do with these things. Some things we're a hundred percent sure about. Some things we're still going to have to talk about, I think, a little bit. Uh, but we're getting closer and closer here with the continuing guidance and the work of, uh, folks like Gray Robinson and, uh, National League of Cities. So, uh, lots going on. Um, if you're interested in learning more about that, you can go to National League of Cities and you can listen to all of the, um, all of the, uh, conference calls that we've had. Uh, they've been going on weekly since these, uh, this act was, uh, was approved. And, uh, there's a ton of guidance there. You can really make yourself dizzy if you want to get into it, but, uh, uh, we're going to talk about some basics tonight that I think can begin to build a plan to where we want to go uh, with our approximately one point, uh, five million dollars that'll be coming to the town of Windermere. Want to be smart with our money. We want to plan it out, um, and use it for some things that hopefully benefit, um, the majority. There's a lot that can be done with these funds. So what you'll hear tonight is not all inclusive of what can be done. So we can talk about it more if folks are, are interested in those other things, but with that, I think I'll, I'll turn it over to Robert. Are you going to present on this item, sir?
Yes.
All right, let's do it.
Okay. I mean, basically if you read over the agenda packet and the executive summary, it goes over the American Rescue Plan Act and the intent, uh, of how the money is supposedly, uh, to be spent. Um, the numbers that are coming in are different from the numbers that came out originally. Um, instead of the one point four nine, now we're looking at about one point four one six. Uh, so we can adjust those numbers accordingly. Uh, but the main focus, I think of the town, especially for us to be in compliance with what the Department of Treasury is putting into place, and Heather can correct me on this too, is again, it's looking at infrastructure as far as water, sewer, uh, wastewater and broadband. Um, there has been some questions as to can it go to a utility? And based on the research that Heather has done, um, we believe that it can go to our existing water line project. Now, one point four million dollars is not going to get you too far with, um, uh, a lot of infrastructure projects that we have. Now we have, uh, probably close to ten million dollars in water projects. Um, but as we have committed in the past, that once we do new project, we're going to go ahead and while the, um, uh, new projects are being constructed, we're just going to go ahead and utilize, you know, to put potable water systems in those project areas. Currently, we have three to four ongoing projects and in order for us to adhere to not only the guidelines of how to spend the money, but also the timeframes in which to spend the money. Um, the staff was throwing it out there as a recommendation. So there's no hearsay as to how we're going to spend the money, where the money is going to go to, is to put it towards those potable water projects that are part of the overall master utility plan for the town of Windermere. In addition to that, it was recommended that we add also a, um, a premium pay for the essential workers during the time of the pandemic. And the numbers that were recommended was a two thousand for full-time staff. And these are one-time payments, a for part-time staff, uh, one thousand. Um, for reserves, it would be, again, uh, they're part-time, so it'd be a thousand dollar bump for them. So the total amount would be fifty-nine thousand dollars for a premium pay, one-time payment to essential workers. So that would be the two port parts would be to pay for the water lines and then also premium pay for um, the essential workers that worked during the pandemic.
Thank you, Robert. So those, those premium pay numbers were, uh, recommendation that I made, um, a lot of our, a lot of our essential workers were left out of what was done by the state, uh, for, it's, those of you most likely know that the state approved a thousand dollar bonus for all law enforcement officers. Um, but I felt that that was, uh, while that was very nice, I mean, I, I certainly think that we can do better and more. Um, and you know, it's certainly up to counsel to, to provide guidance as we move further, but, uh, you know, one of the things that, you know, we relied a lot upon our staff to make sure that they were here no matter what. Uh, in, in serving us and serving our town and community during a time when, um, you know, a lot of us had the, the ability to stay home. Um, you know, they did not have all of that. So, um, and then in terms of water, you know, we, we talk about water as something that can benefit the entire town uh, and all of the residents. I know that, uh, one of the pieces that, that we want to talk about when we, uh, in my mind anyways, when we talk about, uh, building out some of these pieces for the potable water, I want to make sure, uh, maybe we can talk just briefly about how we're going to fund the remainder of that. So we make sure that that's an investment that we make today, that we're going to be able to see a future return on and when we'll be able to, and when we think we're going to be able to do that according to our plan. Um, so that's kind of one of the questions that I had. Um, Robert, can you, do you want to talk about that, uh, that timeframe or um, we can also get a lot of other input from council?
Well, again, the timeframe is dependent upon, it's, it's in the act itself. So you have until, I believe, twenty twenty-four in order to spend those funds.
Yeah, three years.
So we still haven't received the money. We do have instructions on how to get the money. Um, but we want to make sure again, if we get the money, we adhere to the standards that are set forth by the Treasury Department. And we're able to spend it within the timeframe to, because again, as you know, with the town of Windermere, you know, when we do a project, it usually takes twice as long and, you know, sometimes costs twice as much. Um, but with the amount of public input, so on and so forth, we just thought it'd be easier if we already had like shovel-ready projects to put this money towards that meets those guidelines. Now, that's not us relinquishing any further rights or abilities to be able to go after whether an infrastructure plan is approved by the feds. I don't know. Um, but there's also other grants or appropriations that we can request to help bridge that gap between the one point four million and the total, uh, ten million that we need to completely retrofit the town with a potable water system.
Hey, absolutely. This can go towards, towards combined funds as well. Um, I think what I was asking is, as we, so say we make a one point three million dollar investment in our, our long-term water plan. The remainder of that planned build-out time, you know, depending, we would have to probably do it in, in sections. So, you know, we may see some of this bear fruit, you know, in two, three, four, you know, five-year period. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, well, 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 it's good in twenty twenty-four is you also recover the debt service for the Main Street loan. And that's over two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So you'd be able to apply for an S R F loan, which is a low interest, pretty much zero interest loan for a certain amount of time. And we'd be able to self-fund the balance of the project. Um, and then we can pick and choose if we want to do the, um, which one of the three we want to start with and then go from there.
Right. Yeah. So I mean, it'll, it'll have some, certainly some long-term benefit. I mean, as far, as far as, so these are all super solid options, you know, I mean, but as we, as we see the potential to build the, you know, this American Rescue Act out, it can go all the way from uh, helping businesses to rental, emergency rental assistance to folks who weren't able to pay uh, their utilities, you know, and you can build out bits and pieces to this, uh, in all the categories if you want. The secret, I think for us is to plan it out, not water it down too much, um, and make sure that, that the funding moves the needle, because I think it's something that we're probably not going to see again. Um, God willing anyways, I don't think we want to see any more COVID funding if, if we could avoid it. All right. With that, I'm going to leave it open, uh, for council discussion.
I have a question. Is, um, are the outside neighborhoods included in that for the potable or is this just for downtown?
So that's a great question, Mandy. I think that, uh, yes, but some of the outside, some of the, the, uh, the, um, the later annexed areas do have water, but some do not. Some in town as well do.
Yeah, the, the intent now is not only to provide potable water systems, but also for fire protection services as well.
Yes.
I, I think, uh, is it, is it thirty-nine percent of residents have a county water, Robert? Is that the percentage?
I believe so.
Well, I'm all for spending money to, uh, to pay our staff. They all did a fantastic job. Uh, keeping the, the show going during the pandemic and, um, you know, this fifty-nine thousand dollars is, uh, you know, it's only four percent roughly of the total. And, you know, it's much, it's well deserved by all the staff. Um, so I'm all for that and also for, you know, using, using the funds to move forward. Otherwise, you know, it would take ten years to even get started, I think, on our water project, possibly. So.
Thank you, councilperson Martini. And, and Robert, actually, there was some clarification that came out just the other day on the premium pay. Um, originally it looked like you couldn't make any contributions to the retirement plan within those funds if, uh, but you can't make extraordinary contributions to the retirement fund if it's just standard along with the rate of pay that you would be giving them for their premium pay, it can be done. So that was just a clarification that came out last Thursday. Counsel, um, any further comments or thoughts?
Just a quick question, Mayor, and it's, uh, probably Robert's best position to answer it. Um, it, what is, what is the bonus structure for the, the city employees now? Is there annual bonus structure?
No.
Okay, so they don't get any, uh, any bonuses at all?
Uh, the only bonus that you would get would be after a favorable, um, review, then you would request a bump in pay for the next fiscal year.
It's an actual salary increase versus a, an annual bonus.
Correct. Any other comments on the staff bonus, uh, for the, from the American Rescue Act? All right. So we'll add that to the next agenda. And how about, um, how about the water recommendations? I see in general consensus, I don't think that you're necessarily, you know, until you do, you know, if, if something were to come along that made more sense, you know, as long as we weren't too far down the road, you know, you could still adjust. But I believe that, you know, this is a solid place to start and we can begin making sure that this is going to meet all the regulatory requirements of the American Rescue Act and that we have got the right justification for it. Um, and, and, you know, we'll also be watching for similar projects elsewhere, um, that, that will help, uh, help us solidify ours, uh, in terms of, um, being appropriate. Cause it's just not a ton of guidance out yet. Go ahead, Chris.
What's the reimbursement timeframe again?
So what's going to happen with this funding is you're going to get your first disbursement after application, probably, um, I, I, I believe I heard somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, less than eight weeks. It's going to be pretty fast. Um, I see Heather smiling. Maybe she knows, uh, something more. Uh, but the first half will come down with the second disbursement later on in the period. Um, somewhere like a year and a half, I believe.
So will, is there a, a reimbursement application then after completion of, you know, whichever projects are chosen then?
So there's no application by project. Um, we're, we're a designated entity, so we will receive the funds. We simply have to, you know, have the correct dozens number and, and all of the items you need to receive the funding from Treasury. It actually drops down through the state. Um, and, and we will receive that money. Then, um, you know, we'll hold that money and, uh, begin to go ahead and, and work on our projects. There are, there are, are reports that have to be provided to Treasury on a regular basis on what we're doing with the money. Uh, of course, everybody's looking for good, uh, robust stories that we can tell the tale of what, what the funding is doing for local communities. Um, and then there, there's an audit process as well. Although one of the first things I wanted to check with the, the whole funding stream was how much money they put to audit in and it wasn't a ton of money. So, um, the, you know, the general consensus for this is this is money that is designed to get on the street as reasonably and as quickly as possible. Move the needle in terms of infrastructure, move the needle in terms of COVID recovery. Um, and, and help stimulate the economy and get people back to work.
Yes, fair enough. And I, and I, and I'm okay with, uh, how these projects were, were, were chosen. You know, we don't have any leapfrogging or anything of that nature. Um, so I'm good with, I just don't want a FEMA debacle. Your audit.
Yeah.
You don't like.
They're, yeah, and, and totally you're, you're spot on. This is completely different than, than FEMA funding. This is, this is pretty much.
It, it's still federal.
It's a lifetime funding as far as it goes.
Don't say it, Jim.
I know, I know. I should know better of all people. It's a rare, it's a rare opportunity to have those kind of funds drop down. Um, these are the same funds that saved the state budget, uh, this last cycle. Um, or, or, or similar string funds that save the state budget. So, you know, they are going to make a difference. Uh, we can, not to be political, but we can probably thank our children for paying them off at some point if we're lucky.
Can we use these funds to, uh, rehab, uh, historical boathouses?
No, not unless we can tie it to COVID relief or, uh, COVID impact.
We need a new sound system for town hall. Can we get one of those?
Um, I don't, I don't know about that either. It, maybe, we'll see. You know, put it on, you know, let's put it on the list and we can talk it through. Uh, what, what happened with the original COVID funding is that when it came out in the beginning, it was pretty narrow. Um, it opened up a little bit because people were having trouble moving the funds, uh, depending where you live. Um, you know, like the broadband piece, uh, that'll probably expand as well. Right now it looks to me like it's targeted for, um, targeted for public use or utilization by folks who are in the last mile for, for internet or don't have adequate internet for education, work, things like that. Um, if we can make that case and we can have a good solid justification, then we could probably do some of that as well. All right. I don't see any objections. We either just worry out tonight or, uh, or we're on the right track. I like to think, I like to think we're on the right track and I thank staff and everybody for that. All right. I, I think unless there's objection, we're going to move these items forward, Robert, onto the next agenda.
Good, thank you.
All right. Let me make sure that there's not something tucked away at the bottom of the agenda that I'll forget.
No.
Okay, um, we're going to get Robert home for his anniversary. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, seeing none, uh, will be adjourned. I appreciate everybody's, uh, great participation tonight. And I know, uh, that, you know, boathouses and things like that, that, that impact people we all, uh, have as neighbors is tough. Local, local politics is the best. Um, but it, it, it can be tricky at times. I appreciate everybody doing good work on that and being real genuine. Thank you all.
Thank you. Happy anniversary, Robert.
Yep.
Happy anniversary.
I think we're, we're drinking over a bottle of wine.
Well, it is, it is Nessel Wine Day or something like that. I heard her say that, my mom, so I'm sure she's already started.
Sounds good.